I had to hit record because we're already having a good conversation. Now, that's the second time this has happened. Dead gum. All right, so this is our second to last episode for our recording block for today. We're not even gonna be shy about it. We record these things in blocks a month at a time. I am so, so thrilled. We finally got this lady in the chair. Because I, I, truth be told, and you'll back me up on this, I've been trying to get you in this chair for four months.
For a minute, yes.
You were in our original block of guests that we wanted to make sure we got. And with apologies to Rick Franklin and Charlie Phillips. Haven't made contact with them yet, but they're the only ones of council that haven't been in that chair yet. Everybody else has been in. So, uh, man, let me just go ahead. You, did you fill out the little bio thing? You did. I am so proud of you.
Please don't read that. Just shorten it. No one cares.
Oh, I promise you they care. And I like making people squirm a little bit. Cause I warned, oh dang, it's three paragraphs.
Well, it's, you know, already pre-made for all the things.
Okay, I'm gonna skim this. Is that okay?
Please.
Okay, hold on a second. Let me go ahead and hit our little guest intro music. Jeray Feltes, Dr. Jeray Feltes, is a native of Dallas achieving some degrees here and there. Austin College, Wake Forest, yada, yada, yada. Dr. Feltes has been actively involved in McKinney. Was elected to the McKinney City Council in 2021, one of the best decisions the city's ever made. Uh, District Three. I am in fact, one of your constituents. I am so proud. So you are my councilwoman. You're not just a councilwoman, you're my councilwoman.
Best district ever.
I'm telling you. Dr. Feltes was an appointed mayor pro tem. What exactly is that? We'll get into that in this episode, cause a lot of people have no idea what Mayor Pro Tem is. You're not the junior varsity mayor. It's more than that.
It is a little more than that.
It's a little more than that, yeah. And she's previously served in McKinney EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, Children's Advocacy Center of Collin County Board of Directors, Chief of Police Advisory Council, Collin College Law Enforcement Academy Advisory Board. You've been around. You've done some things. Yeah, possibly one of the most qualified, uh, people to potentially even serve on city council. And, uh, let me just go ahead and kill this music real quick. She's not gonna point this out, but Jeray is the first ever African-American female to be elected to city council. Angela Richardson Woods served. She was appointed, uh, during the COVID epidemic. She filled the seat left by LaShady and Shamwell when he resigned. Amazing job. Angela serves on CDC. She does some really cool stuff. We will have her in that very chair that you're sitting in right now. Please welcome Dr. Jeray Feltes.
Oh, I feel so honored to be here. Thank you, guys. You've been really patient in the process. Cause I know we have tried to nail down a date for quite a while.
What did I say? We're not going anywhere.
And neither am I.
No, you're not.
Yes.
No. I, I won't even pretend to be unbiased. I am completely biased. Fred, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna monologue for a second.
Just jump on, man.
This lady, let me tell you, I mean, she is as good as they come. And I'm gonna embarrass her a little bit because I'm a huge fan of Jeray Feltes. Going all the way back to when we were classmates in Leadership McKinney class of 2020. Clearly the best class ever. Sorry for all you other Leadership McKinney classes. But 2020 was where it's at. Unfortunately, we were the COVID class.
We were. We got cut short a little bit.
Cut short. We lost our last three. We had to do the whole Zoom call Leadership McKinney thing. That was terrible.
It was weird, yeah. But we made it.
Buzz Colby, God rest his soul, just an amazing man. He made it the best he could. Uh, Deb Fitzgerald, uh, you're not gonna listen to this episode, Deb, but we love you anyway. Up in Iowa, Nebraska, wherever you are up there in the Midwest.
We miss Deb so much. Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so you have lived your life, lady. You have made the most of your years. A, a single mom kicking butt, two daughters, a medical doctor. Yeah, like, could you be a little less impressive, please? It's obnoxious how impressive you are.
Oh, you're too kind. I have to tell you though, I'm one of five girls and I'm probably one of the least impressive.
Really?
I am.
How's that come around?
Okay, but did they have cool names also?
They, you know, not like mine. Uh, my parents are from New Orleans, so you know, you get this very kind of French name. Yeah, yeah. So Stacy, Kim, me, Jamie, and Whitney.
What?
Yeah.
You're the only one with a tilde.
Well, Kim's name is short for Kiamba. She came out, you remember Roots, the series Roots? So she came out around that time when a lot of these.
Late seventies, early eighties?
Yeah, so hers is Kiamba, but she goes by Kim.
Okay.
There's not a real, you know, basic way to say Jeray.
I'm just gonna call you G.
You know.
What's up, G?
Dr. G.
Dr. G.
Yeah, I know.
But it, but it is with a hard J sound.
It's actually with a softer J, but you know, yeah.
Well, the emphasis on Ray.
You know.
Jeray.
Yeah, you know.
Well, you could, you could be the maître d' at a French restaurant. Oh, and I am mademoiselle Jeray. How may I serve you tonight?
Maybe in my next profession. We'll consider that, yeah.
Because you don't have enough stuff going on already.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, was, was your, when, when they, when you were in high school? And people were saying, you know, I'm going to be a all-star quarterback. I'm gonna be a whatever. Did you make up a new thing and say, I'm going to be option D, all of the above?
I did not. You know, I was actually very shy in high school.
Okay, so tell us about that.
Yeah, I was shy. I mean, I had a really outgoing older sister. She was just one grade above me. You know, she had like the big personality and all the friends and, and all the things. And, and so, you know, I was kind of the shyer, more quiet, studious one. I think I decided very, very early in life that I wanted to go into medicine. So for me, the path was pretty clear and I kind of stuck it out all the way through. There was at one point, I thought, maybe not gonna do this. And then thought about all of the other things I could potentially do and I just couldn't see myself going that route. And so it was, it became very clear that I think the profession chose me very early on and then I pursued it. So, you know.
So does Austin College have a pre-med program?
It has actually at the time, one of the strongest, still one of the strongest pre-med programs in the state.
Awesome.
So when I was doing my interviews and going around to see different colleges, I had one question for admissions counselor, which is tell me your matriculation rate into medical school within two years of graduation.
There you go.
And Austin College had the highest out of all of the schools that I interviewed, more than 90%.
Awesome.
And so I felt like, you know, that's obviously if you wanna make your chances the best possible, you go to the best possible institution. And they prepared us very well and thankfully, all the things worked out. So I, I was gonna stay in Texas after that, cause you know, I'm a Texas girl. I love Texas. But my mom was young when she got married. You know, she's 21. She had, you know, kids back to back to back. And she told me, do not live your entire life in Texas. Don't do that. You need to go out, go see the world, go experience a different community to live in. And I'm really thankful for that because that's where I came out of my shell. Suddenly the whole world looked different, you know? And I was presented with a number of opportunities, not just to serve in the community, but take on some leadership roles. And that really became evident in medical school. And I moved out to North Carolina to go to medical school there.
So Wake Forest Medical School, where'd you do residency?
Uh, University of Maryland in Baltimore.
No kidding?
Yeah.
I was born in Baltimore.
I heard that. I heard that.
I had no idea.
I had my oldest child in Baltimore. Yes. Yeah, my last year of residency, I had my oldest child.
Well, you had a kid in residency.
Yeah, I don't recommend it.
Oh, God.
All of the above, you know, let me be a resident and.
I don't recommend that. You know, I, I, for some reason, I make it a little harder on myself at times, but.
So were you chief resident at that point?
I actually passed on being chief resident because I wanted to be a mom.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Yes. So it, it, it was, you know, it's tough, you know? We had a great class and, um, we had, any of us could have served as chief resident. I mean, we had a really fantastic class, but I got married and decided to start a family. And so my oldest kid came along and in all honesty, that schedule is, you know, they say the maximum hours are 80 hours a week.
That doesn't happen.
That's a lie.
That was a lie.
That's a lie.
But how, how do you do it? Cause you're supposed to very, very have a very moderated caffeine intake during pregnancy.
Yeah, like almost none.
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, I can't even tell you. I'm grateful that I was in my twenties.
She's a machine. That's why. Option D, all of the above.
I was in my twenties and that made a huge difference. But I remember the last night of call that I took when I, it was just a few, like a week before my daughter was born. So I was way out there, you know? And it's a 14-store hospital, 14-story hospital. And, um, you know, going up and down, trying to see patients in the ER and then going back up to the floor. And my best friend was on call that night with me, um, on the OB service. So we had an inpatient hospital service and we had an OB service. And she was doing call for the OB service and she felt so bad for me. She was like, you are not gonna make it. So she helped. We just kind of trucked along that night and I always, I'm, I'm so grateful for her because I don't think I would have made it through that last night, you know? And it's amazing what women are able to endure as they're training and practicing as full-blown physicians and really seeing a heavy load of patients and working a lot of hours. But, you know, I always say we're built for, to be tough and we can, we can endure a lot. And so we just, we managed to help each other push through, so.
So you, you're, you're, you're doing, you're doing your, your rounds and things like that? And having contractions and breathing and just working through it?
Literally, yeah.
Braxton Hicks in full-blown mode, huh?
I'd actually gone into preterm labor and had to, you know, was ordered to sit down for a little bit. But then, you know, I got past the.
You don't really take orders like that very well, do you?
I didn't do so well. I do, you know, I tried. I took it a little easier, but we made it to the finish line, full term. And she came out nice and healthy, you know, so.
Now, so all of that, how in the world do you end up running the, the Mesquite Community Health Center?
Well, so we moved back to Texas, um, and actually moved back faster than I expected. Because we had her, I thought it's time to go home to like where parents and family are.
Where you've got a tribe.
Where I've got a tribe. You know, you need it. You need a tribe.
You need a tribe, yeah.
Yes, yes. So we moved back and I thought, well, I'll apply for my, my license as we're moving. And then got here, because you know, Maryland and Delaware, I had licenses there and they took like four to six weeks. Oh, no problem. You know, we'll move, I guess settle in and I'll go to work. Seven months, Texas, seven months to get a license. Yeah, it was quite a process. And it was, you know, lost paperwork and all kinds of things. But I moved back and didn't have a license and so had to figure out like, what am I gonna do? And I ended up actually working in Oklahoma. I was commuting from McKinney out to Oklahoma.
Because Oklahoma got it done in like three days.
Well, because you can work for the Indian Health Services as long as you have a state license somewhere.
Somewhere. So you were what?
So with the Choctaw Nation.
Choctaw, okay.
They had a nice new network of clinics and I will tell you, that was probably the best experience I could have asked for at that moment. Because I went from a tertiary care urban medicine center to being the rural doctor. Those are two very different types of medicine.
Dr. Jeray, medicine woman.
And, but it taught me a lot about not relying on other consultants, right? You are it. You are it.
There's no referrals. It's you.
Oh, yeah. Cause the referral is gonna take three, four weeks, right? And so it was a great learning curve for me. And so I started looking for a position after that. Um, now by this point, I'm second, I'm pregnant with my second child. And so my prayer was, I want a great place where I can grow some roots. I don't wanna be there at night. I don't wanna be there on weekend. And I don't wanna be doing a crazy call because I wanna be a mom, right? I wanna be available to my kids. And so I, I actually fasted and prayed for that for several weeks. And Mesquite came up and I mean, I'd interviewed a couple of places. And the moment I drove on the parking lot, I knew it. I knew that was the place that I wanted to be. It was a great, a great place to work. Um, so it's owned and operated by the city of Mesquite and the Mesquite Independent School District. And so they, we took care of the employees and the employees' families. And it was really, you know, kind of limited care at the time. There were a lot of urgent care and we wanted to turn it into a primary care center. So we expanded the scope of practice, the practice there. We did physicals, but we also did joint injections. And we took off toenails and we removed skin cancers and we, you know, testosterone pellets and, you know, weight loss management and all of the things. We wanted it to be a place where people felt comfortable coming and not feeling like they had to go see 10 other doctors to get the same care. But I had a great time there. Um, the city is a self-insured entity. So they control their healthcare plan and that was my first introduction into health policy. Yeah, that was different.
The mud.
That was the, yeah. So we, we looked at actual metrics. So if you create a plan for diabetics and you look at your highest costing diabetics, right? And some of those are typically on insulin and you don't cover their insulin, guess what's gonna happen? They're gonna be sicker. They're gonna be in the ER more. They're gonna be missing work more. They're gonna be in the hospital more, costing much more.
Indirect cost explodes.
So we adjusted the pharmacy plan so that people could actually afford their insulin.
There you go.
That was the first thing that we changed. And that was, that was the start of something that I loved that I didn't know I would.
Yeah?
Yeah.
What, what is that?
Policy creation. Let's actually look at what is the need for your patients and then create a policy around that, right?
And that led to the next chapter of your career. Fred, are you okay if we take this like thematically rather than chronologically? Is that okay?
That's fine. I just, I just have, I just have a thought I'm hanging on to.
Go for it.
No, 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 go ahead. It, it doesn't fit here. It will fit later.
We're, we'll come to the current day stuff that you're up to and then we'll pivot back to the McKinney side and city council and all that, if you're okay with it.
That sounds great.
Cause I'm just trying to think like conversation flow. How in the world do we leave this? Go to city council and come back to what you're doing now. It's a little disjointed, so. Okay, so McKinney runs its course. How in the world do you decide it's time to move on? It's time for the next thing in medicine?
Um, I think honestly, after getting elected to council, um, it became very apparent to me that I needed to be closer to home. So once again, I started praying about.
Cause Mesquite's a ways down there.
It's a tad far. It's a tad far. And it wears on you physically in ways that you don't even recognize until it's over, you know? And so shortly after I got elected, I said, you know, God, I'm really looking for, what is the next move? You know, where do, where do you see me long-term? And I do want my life to serve him. So what does that look like? What is the next step? How many more people can I impact if I open myself as a vessel to you, to be used, right? And so I started praying about that and then that's, this position, um, came up with Healthy Family Services. It's a nonprofit organization. Um, we are seeking status to be a federally qualified health center, meaning that we really try to reach those who struggle to access care the most. Medicare, Medicaid, uninsured patients, and we do take commercial insurance too. But, but the goal is to, for the populations that really do struggle to find good primary care, how do we get that access open to them? And so we started this, you know, the company started, they brought me on as the CEO of the company in April and we are going to try to reach as many people as we can.
Love it.
Yeah, it's awesome.
They are smart from a federal perspective because having their CEO be a double minority.
Yeah.
It gets a lot more eyeballs.
Yeah, well, not exactly, not exactly.
Is it, is it like funding and granting and stuff? Isn't it a benefit for, you know, I know you're not a for-profit enterprise, so the whole hub designation doesn't really apply.
No, it's, it, it does get you an enhanced Medicaid reimbursement, right? Because the idea is if you get an enhanced Medicaid reimbursement, then you use that funding to help people who do not have insurance at all.
Yeah.
That's sort of the goal, right? So, um, me as the CEO, I'm part of the company. So they don't look at me individually. They look at the, the, the goal, the mission and the goals of the company.
Yeah, with you being a nonprofit, you've got a, a fully fledged board and all of that, so, okay.
Full-fledged board. We have awesome board members. A lot of them are from McKinney and work here in McKinney and have great input and great experiences. So they bring a lot to the table.
You said the facility's in Louisville currently and you're looking to expand?
Yep. So it's inside Medical City Louisville.
Okay.
And we'll be looking at all the markets where we see there's a struggle. That's what, where we're looking.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you very quickly become a real estate enterprise.
Well, and that's the part that I don't have the most experience in, but I have a good team to help with that.
There you go.
So, yeah.
Love it.
Yeah.
Fred, what was your thought?
Well, you know, first off, you know, amazing, just, just a few things that you, you know, well, I, I thought I knew, but I always, I didn't know because you know.
I told you, man.
Things like, like mind blown. And you know, I keep on going back to the option D, all of the above. What, everywhere that you've been, you have, you've been a, a change maker. You know, and you've, 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 you've improved things for the better, always keeping, you know, people in mind. It just keeps on growing bigger and bigger and bigger. But, you know, as, as one of the, you know, select few elected to our city council, you know, my thought was, that's not, that's not the end. You know, we would love to have you here, you know, indefinitely, but you know, we do, we know, we know we have term limits at some point, right? But, you know, are, do you have aspirations for even larger political?
How are you gonna draw her off sides like that, man? I can tell you from conversations. I have had these conversations with Jeray. She had no aspirations for city council.
Zero.
She actively resisted it.
Not on the radar at all.
People basically demanded that she run. Hey, George can be very persuasive.
Man, that man is amazing. He's the best salesman ever.
Isn't he the best?
Best salesman ever, yeah.
It, it's so hard for me to act like I'm unbiased with this whole political stuff with Prop A and whatnot. I tried very hard to keep my own opinions out of it. We recorded an episode with him and with Paul Chabot and whatnot. And I'm just a really big fan of George as a human. I think he's a great guy. I think he's very, very effective as mayor. He's overseen some of the hardest years McKinney has ever seen. And McKinney is way stronger than a lot of the cities around us.
No question.
We're, I like it city council and mayor and the, the people that are on boards and commissions in our neighboring cities.
Right.
And I'm sitting here going, I know I'm not totally unbiased because I live and work in McKinney, but I'm, I'm very familiar with a lot of other leadership of other cities nearby. And man, McKinney's doing way better than our neighbors.
We've, we've been very, very fortunate. I always say, you know, George kind of drug me into this, but the reason why I was able to take his advice is because you look at the fruits of a person.
Yeah.
Right? And you listen to what people say about them. And the number of people that have been helped by George and May Lee that we will never hear about on a public platform is overwhelming. These people give of themselves constantly to make sure that others around them are well taken care of. And that's a person I can follow. Yes, he needs a good vision. Yes, we need a strategy for growth, absolutely. And all of those things were in place, but the fruit of the person is also what I look at. And he's, he's an amazing person, so.
So at what point, what was the, the tipping point to use a Malcolm Gladwell?
Yeah.
Um, you know, term, what was the tipping point for you in saying, okay, fine, I will run for city council?
Honestly, someone pissed me off. Okay, so kind of, right? And I think it was a strategy. Just as the backstory, cause a, a lot of people probably don't know this, but yes, I had no aspirations, but I was volunteering here in McKinney with City Church. Fantastic organization. Love it. Like great nonprofit that helps kids on the east side. And, um, somehow rolled into all these, you know, boards and different advisory boards and things like that. And met a lot of people along the way and ended up in leadership, which was awesome.
Best class ever.
Yes, best class ever.
I'm, I'm contractually obligated to say those words anytime Leadership McKinney comes up.
You know, you know, we all want, we are. But yeah, so I get to, you know, finishing leadership and, um, being on the EDC. And Scott Elliott makes this announcement that he's not running for reelection. And everyone's devastated because Scott is a great person.
Yeah.
And I will never forget, it was the day after Thanksgiving 2020. Now, mind you, we're in the midst of a pandemic, okay?
That's still like in the middle of the pandemic. Nothing's looking good at that point.
Nothing at all. And George calls me and says, hey, I hear you live in District Three. And I go, no, absolutely not. Not gonna do it, you know? And I told him, you know, at the time, it was a tough point in my life. I was getting divorced. I have these two pre-teens. And I'm a physician trying to navigate this pandemic and we don't, you know, we had some information, but not really enough to know what we were really, really doing. And, and it was a tough time, you know? And so I just told George, look, it, there's just too many, there are too many things on my plate last, right now. So I think we need to hold off on that. I'll think about it another time. Well, then I go, you know, keep going. And over the course of a few weeks, I mean, I, if, I felt like everyone I knew was asking me to run. And I had to stop and pray about it once again. And, um, asked everyone that I thought knew enough about me to have a good, good opinion. All of my mentors, my parents, my siblings, my best friends, all of the things. And I called one of my friends and, and he's an MD PhD neuroscientist, okay? And so he has.
He's a double D.
He's a double D. Yes, yes, yes.
As they say.
He's, he's brilliant guy, brilliant guy. And he didn't wanna try to make my decision for me, but he says, well, maybe you've just peaked.
Oh, no, he did not.
Oh, yes, he did. And I was like.
Oh, no.
What do you mean? And he's like, I mean.
He was intentionally poking the bear.
He knew what he was doing.
He knew what he was doing.
We've been friends for over 20 years, so of course.
He knew exactly what he was doing. He was drawing you all the way off sides.
He was like, I mean, I know, I know you have these things going on, right? But you are capable, so it's not about capability. It's about willingness. And the question really is, do you have anything else to offer the world? I mean, you, you, you're a mom. That's, I mean, a lot of women.
Oh, he's wrong for that.
The best thing they'll ever do is be a mom. And I was like, I hope that's the best thing I ever do, right? You're a doctor. That's a lot. That's saying, that's enough, right? Like, isn't that enough? And it just hits me off. Like, I don't have anything else to offer.
Fred, Fred, I'm curious, if you can remember, how many times in this podcast, in these, you know, 20 or 30 something episodes, have I ever audibly gasped and gone?
He knew what he was doing, right?
Oh, that dirty dog.
But I think what he was doing was forcing me to really think about, you know, challenging myself at this stage in life.
Yeah.
You know, is it, am I done achieving? Am I done?
You're definitely not done.
Trying to help, trying to find solutions, trying to help this world be a better place?
You're done when you're dead.
I'm done when I'm dead.
Okay, but, you know, at the same time, you know, in your, in your various positions and roles and things like that, you know, well, you know, I kind of already know the answer if you're, you know, working your shift the day before giving birth that, you know, that.
Literally.
Have, have you ever, have you ever sat down and just said, man, I am tired?
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I don't wanna do this anymore. Does that, does that ever come on?
I think everyone gets to the point where they say they're, they're really, really tired. And you have to recognize when you're there that it's time to take a break. I never make a decision about continuing with something or stopping something until I've had a break so that I can clearly make a decision, you know? And, um, and I keep really great people around me to help keep my perspective in the right place. And I think that's really super important too, when you're doing this work, because it can get exhausting. You know, you have a full-time job, you're doing full-time parenting. And then you try the best you can to do as many things as you can for your community in the process. And it's, it's a great honor. I, I would do it again a thousand times, you know, because it's a lot of fun. It's great work. You feel like you've left something positive, you know, and a positive impact, so it's awesome.
And so, so what, you know, okay, so us mortals, us regular humans, we only have 24 hours in our day. You know, I feel like you're getting 24 hours done in the first four hours of, of the morning. Like, so, so like, you know, do, do you actually get time off?
Um, yes, not as much time off, I would say. I, I was just talking to someone who took a European trip for 16 days. I had never taken 16 days off. Yeah, that, that was amazing. Um, my vacations are usually four, maybe five days, you know, and then it's back to work. But I think a lot of that is also a function of being a full-time working parent, you know? Um, I suspect that will change in the future. Uh, but I have, you know, I, people ask me all the time, how do you do it? No, it is not me. I have a village. It is Arisha Spivey and Jessica McDonald and Jamie Stain and Deondra Pritchett and Angela Richardson Woods and Beth Bentley. That is my village.
That's a tribe right there.
That's my village. And they help, they come in, I mean, they really wrap their arms around me. Um, I love having a great village that feeds into my girls. You know, they really are fantastic role models for my girls. My girls love them. And those are the women holding my life up so that I can do these types of things, you know? So no one does it by themselves. If they try to act like they are, they're lying. No, we're not created to walk this life alone, you know? And it's, and it's okay to say, hey, I need some help. Can you, you know, do X, Y, or Z? And I'm there to help them too, you know, so.
Yeah, that's amazing. You know, I think, you know, you, you had a village for your children. Not me. I was looking for snitches. I was like, listen, you, you, you're over there where my, where my boys are. If you see them messing up, you know what to do.
Yeah.
Call me.
Just get a stick and hit them with it.
That's right.
We have snitches too, you know? We keep, we keep each other's kids in line, you know? So we're, we're kind of old school.
I don't know, you know, I, you know, I don't confess, you know, that my wife and I ran into you a couple of days ago where, you know, we're out, we're out having a meal and your daughters were like perfectly behaved.
Well, then. I have, I have.
You didn't see the shock collars on their ankles.
Right. I have great girls. They're about as different as can be, you know? I have one that's kind of, my older one is like me. She's shy and kind of more reserved, but a brainiac. And then I have the younger one that never takes no for an answer. Not one day in her life.
Typical second born, huh?
Yeah, yeah. But they're, I have been very blessed to have two smart girls with good heads on their shoulders. So we're just gonna pray that continuously.
They are perfectly you, but polar opposites from each other.
Polar opposites.
So that must make for some interesting dynamics between the two of them.
Very, I mean, it's totally different parenting styles, you have to assume, you know, so.
But if they're, if they're at each other, do you go in and moderate or do you play more like a judge at tennis match going, oh, oh?
You know.
Evaluating points.
You know, it depends. I, I think I end up doing a little bit of both. But great, thankfully, they get along very well for the most part, so. There, there are very few times that I have to intervene.
Oh, that's good.
For the most part, she says casually.
They're two teenage girls, I mean.
Sisters in their teenage years.
Yes.
I mean, at a certain point, you just have to sit back and watch the claws come out.
And, and you know what? It'll, it'll be a moment and then it passes and I just pray that everyone's alive.
And then they hug it out, and then they're good.
They're fine.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let's hug. Okay, cool, let's go.
Yeah, then we're in bed watching movies and eating popcorn. You know, that's, that's how it usually works out.
I, I have a boy and a girl, seven and five right now, and I'm just grateful they're not both the same gender.
Oh, man.
There's a certain amount of mutual respect, a certain amount of, okay, I will tolerate you, you will tolerate me. And, you know, give each other space. But if either, if they were either both boys or both girls, I know it'd be very different.
You know, clothes, makeup, you know, things like that. You would, they, they.
My five-year-old is already putting makeup on and putting fingernail polish on.
Yeah.
She plays with her mom's stuff. And it was like,
Oh, yeah.
You're five.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I was expecting this, but longer in the future than, but sweetheart, you are five, come on.
I wish I could tell you it gets better. It does not.
No. No, the train has left the station there.
I have nothing to offer. Only have two boys. They're twenty-two and twenty-four. One already has his own home. So I'm like, I don't know, I'm listening to these girl stories and I'm like, you know, but you know, when my children were younger, I thought for sure that it was just my, my boys. So I, I have, I had friends who have, who have sons that were older than mine. And I was like, am I crazy? And they're like, no. Is this normal? That's normal.
Yeah, you know, it's weird as a parent. You go, I'm not sure this is normal. I, you know, and then you find out that it, you know, every kid is doing kind of the same thing.
The whole it takes a village thing, right?
Take a village, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna pivot back to city council because there's so much meat on that bone. There's so much meat on that bone. Let's talk for a second about Mayor Pro Tem. What is it, what is the responsibilities of Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah.
And why in the world did they pick you aside from you being amazing?
Great question, great question. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem is basically like the vice mayor. So when the mayor is not available, I show up on the scene to take his place. Now, normally that works out to be things like reading proclamations or attending different events and things like that. And um, I was fortunate to get appointed as the Mayor Pro Tem just this summer, so I'm super excited about it. Um, apparently I'm the first African-American female, obviously, Mayor Pro Tem, which is awesome.
Yeah.
Um, and it was really.
That's what, just what you do. That's what you do.
All of the above.
So what, forgive my ignorance here, Randy Rogers served, too, turned, termed out, is that what happened?
He, yeah, when he termed out, he was Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, so he left in what, he was replaced in May?
In May.
Okay, so then you were appointed, uh, you were appointed over the summer, taking over from Randy Rogers.
Sorry, no, Charlie served as Mayor Pro Tem for a year.
Oh, okay.
So he was Mayor Pro Tem, cause Randy's been gone for two years. So last year, Charlie was the Mayor Pro Tem.
Right, sorry, I'm, my, my council terms are getting mixed up here. Sorry. I go to council when I need to go to council, when there's some reason for it.
I don't blame you on that one. It's not always the most riveting experience.
I imagine at some point, I, if the good people of McKinney choose to do so, I will have a term, but it's probably a lot of years from now.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah, or, let's see, you have.
Listen, she's getting it done with two preteen daughters.
You're getting out at twenty-nine, twenty twenty-nine, because you're gonna win reelection for District Three. Uh, and, and then you'll, you'll run for mayor at that point, right? Is that what's next? No.
And, but we, we do need.
Sound like George in November of twenty twenty.
But we do need to clarify that Pro Tem does not automatically equate to becoming the next mayor.
No, it does not.
No, it does not. No, not at all.
Have to run for mayor.
Yeah.
Thankfully, Pro Tem is just appointed.
It's just an appointment thing, yeah.
Yeah, but who, who would oppose Jure in a run for the mayor?
Not anyone with saineness, not, not even one of any brain cells. I'm not running against her.
Oh, no worries there, no worries there.
That's what you said about city council. Someone's gonna convince you to run for mayor at some point.
Um, good luck, good luck, okay.
Well, you know, we're just gonna have to, we're just have to scrub back in the audio timeline for that one person who said, maybe you've peaked.
All I gotta do is say you can't do it, and you're gonna be like, hold my beer.
Ooh, I don't like that term. Yeah, I don't like that.
So, let's see, so you are, you've got one more term after this. Of course, you're gonna be reelected because you're amazing. And the people of District Three want more of Jure in their lives. So.
Very kind.
The very earliest I could even potentially consider running would be twenty twenty-nine.
Actually, you can consider running at any point because there are at-large positions.
But I like those people, and they are not termed out.
Out-large position in two years.
My kid's gotta get older first, before I even think about that.
It is tough when the, I don't know how anyone with young kids does this.
There's no way.
My kids, they cook meals themselves and wash their own clothes.
Allison and I have had the conversations of what might be in the future at some point. And the, the promise that I made was not while the kids are young, like, they have to at least be in high school.
Yeah, well, in high school, they don't want to hang out with you anymore anyway.
Yeah, I mean, they're practically out of my house when they're in high school. Cause they'll be with their friends and doing school stuff all the time.
Right.
Unless you are that house.
No.
Where all the kids come over.
That's right.
And then you best have two refrigerators and a pantry just stocked.
Oh, we've already had that conversation. Because if, if I get my, if I get my way, we will be that house. And I will know all of my kids' friends on a first-name basis.
And trust me, they'll just start dropping over because they coordinate themselves after a while. It's like, oh, such and such has been in the night. Oh, well, great, welcome.
Just to be clear, like, I don't want to backdoor, like, say I'm running for city council, because I'm definitely not. I have no plans for that right now. When the opportunity, when the opportunity presents itself, I'm not gonna back away from it. I just know that that's a lot of years from now. I hope it is. Otherwise, I'm gonna have some real explaining to do with my wife.
I think it's, I think it's a wonderful thing to step up whenever God gives you that nudge to do it, one. But two, you're doing great work already because you're getting to understand the fabric of McKinney. What are all of the parts that make it work and all of the people that contribute to it? So you're, you're, you're gonna be very well equipped, whether it is next year or in ten years, it doesn't matter.
You see how she said that?
There's a lot, I am not running.
She emphasized leading with the, with the, with the left eyebrow.
I'm not running for Charlie's seat. I have no interest in Charlie's seat. So.
Okay.
It's too soon, baby, it's too soon. No, you're gonna draw me all the way offside.
I, I, you know, it's not about when you say it's, it's time. It's about, it's about when it is actually just time.
Let me put it this way.
She is a student. You see, she's a student. She took that one moment.
Let me put it this way, what I said when I was in Leadership McKinney, and people were asking me then, when are you gonna run for something? I said, I have no idea. I don't have any plans to run. I will run when the people around me in positions of influence demand that I run.
Yeah.
And at whatever point that is, if it comes, great. If it doesn't come, my life is full.
Yeah.
I don't need to run for anything to feel happy with my life.
It speaks volumes when people step up because there are a lot of people around them saying, we want you to lead us.
Yeah.
Right? It, it's always a big concern for me when people step up who, who are not being asked, but they just want to run. And I'm not trying to dampen anybody's ambition, right? But.
Ambition in local politics is dangerous.
It is. It, it can, it can be for sure, for sure. So I, you know, I think it's, it's a much better, it works out better for the community. When we know that there's somebody who has a heart for the community, who want to see good things happen here, who are not uh, afraid of working hard to make sure good things happen here.
Yeah.
And are asked then to step up and, and take on a leadership role.
Okay, so, you know, I, I know that our, our listenership, our subscribership grows with every episode. And we've already had several of the.
Multiplying after this one.
City, yeah, absolutely, you know, might, might cause servers.
Oh my gosh, they got Jure? Oh, they must be very important.
That's right.
I hope I don't just run off half of your listeners, okay?
No, absolutely not. But you know, for, for, for those who are, who are just tuning in or just, you know, just aware now of, of, you know, that we have a city council, can you, can you just summarize for the audience, you know, what are your responsibilities? Um, and if you could add on to that, what has been your greatest reward thus far being part of the council?
So our responsibilities are really to take the concerns of the citizens and implement policies that help to solve the problems, right? So whether that is around um, economic development, or it's around budgeting, or if it's addressing the housing crisis or the homelessness crisis, or what have you. Our job is to take the issues that are of concern to our, our constituents and implement policies to make it better.
All right.
That's the nutshell, right?
All right.
Um, now, there are a lot of things that come along with that. That's attending meetings, that's attending events, that's liaising to other boards and commissions when they meet as well. Um, that's getting out in the community and talking to people and meeting with constituents and going to sites to see, you know, whatever the pothole is that's been the problem and trying to get the city to fix it and things like, you know, all of the things.
The sausage making of local government.
Sausage making of, that's a great way to put it. That's a great way to put it.
Cause I mean, what, the, the number of times that we have had people in here, sitting in these two seats right here. And when it comes down to, how do you get something done?
Yeah.
The first step is always, have you called your councilperson? Cause you have two representatives.
Yes.
District one, two, three, and four, and two at large. So at, any citizen listening to this podcast.
And the mayor.
And the mayor, yeah, for sure. You know, the mayor's got a lot on his plate. It's gonna be a lot easier. It's gonna be a lot easier to get ahold of District one, two, three, four.
That's true.
Uh, George has a lot of people vying for his time.
Yes.
But I mean, you are my, my councilperson. I'm incredibly proud that you are. I'm, I'm very proud to say that. But also, Michael Jones and Charlie Phillips are my councilperson, because they're the two at large.
Absolutely.
So every single person listening to this podcast, if there's something going on that you need to get done, if there's something with Public Works, if there's a problem in the neighborhood that you're, let's say you don't have an HOA, or you're in an HOA neighborhood in Stonebridge Ranch ain't doing their job.
Right.
If there's something that needs doing, your councilperson is the first line of defense.
And we wanna help.
Yeah.
We want to help. Sometimes there are issues that um, we can speak to the urgency of an issue, right? It's not that the staff is disregarding, but sometimes they don't know how urgent an issue is, and then we can bring it forward, right?
Yep.
Um, I do want to give kudos to Justin Beller, District One, because he has a large sector of the city that does not have an HOA. So he serves as councilman and HOA president of many neighborhoods.
Yeah, a lot of these older neighborhoods, a lot of gentrified spaces.
East side.
And it is by far the most ethnically and socio-economically diverse of all four districts.
It is, it is. It's a great place.
And the fact that he was chosen and basically demanded by the people of District One is, this is our guy, this is who we want.
Right.
And the fact that he is able to represent such a diverse group of citizens.
Does incredibly well doing it.
And I mean, I'm sitting here looking at people like, I'm sorry for the shout out, Derek and Saritha, uh, love y'all. Class of twenty twenties, there's Saritha Robinson, best class ever. You know, I had conversations with, with Derek. It was like, Derek Robinson, when are you gonna run for city council? Like, when, when are you gonna run for something? I'd vote for him in a heartbeat.
Oh, yeah.
And he's like, why? Justin Beller's doing great. I'm gonna vote for Justin Beller.
And you're gonna keep hearing that answer, because he works incredibly hard. There is no question about his dedication to District One.
Yeah.
And he's been able to accomplish so much for that district. So it's really quite admirable. He, I, I hope, I hear, maybe he's running for reelection. He better be. He better be, and.
He's really good for District One.
Overwhelming support because he has his eye on the right goals for the city.
And he is able to connect with people across the board.
Yes.
You know, uh, all three or four major, uh, you know, socioeconomic divides and, and ethnicities that are represented in District One, he has rapport with all of them.
Everyone, yes. He does a fantastic job.
And I, it's, it's weird that we're talking about someone that has, isn't here right now, but he has been here. He's been sitting in that very chair right there. With Patrick.
With Patrick.
I mean, that was so much fun.
Awesome councilman, you know?
Yeah, Patrick was my mentor when I was in leadership.
Yes.
And, you know, he was involved in me being in leadership. So I, I will always have a debt of gratitude to Patrick Cludier.
He's got the best one-liners I've ever heard.
You know, he's built to be a grandpa.
He really is.
That dude has more one-liners than anybody else I've ever met in McKinney.
Oh, yeah. Great stories. I mean, he's a history buff. I love history, so.
He loves McKinney.
We can sit down and talk stories all day.
For somebody who's only lived here for, you know, fifteen years or so, he hasn't lived here for that long, you know?
No, he's lived here a long time.
Really?
Since the nineties.
Nine.
Yeah, he moved here in the early nineties.
I knew he moved here, he moved over there off of El Dorado. For some reason, I thought that he, he was a little bit later in life when he moved here.
I know he's had his business at, at least twenty-five years, because I think he's had his business on this.
I'm, I'm a decade off then. You'd think I'd know by now. Geez, okay.
Been here for, he's, he's.
Let me walk that back, Jenkins, walk it back, okay?
Okay, so, but you know, thank, thank you for, you know, all that. But what would you say has been your greatest accomplishment?
So anyways, back to the question, Fred, I was gonna say ten minutes ago.
You asked me another question that I wanna come back to, and I'll, and I'll answer that one too, but um, I think the biggest blessing out of all of this is that you get to be a blessing to someone else. And I've said this in multiple, uh, at multiple events. But I come from a family of pastors, and I didn't go into like the family business of ministry, right? So I have, you know, my cousins, my father, my great-grandfather, great-grandfather, everyone's been in ministry in some form. And I've always looked at medicine as a form of ministry, but so is, so is community service. And so the biggest benefit I think I have gotten out of this is that I do see community service as a ministry. It is a way to give back and to represent God in a really phenomenal way on a big platform. And so that's, I wanted to answer that question really quick. What was, what was the question you just asked, though?
Biggest accomplishment.
Yeah, your, your greatest accomplishment.
Um.
Which is gonna be tough because you're so humble.
You mean accomplishment on council?
Yes, on council.
Yeah, so, and I, I can't, I can't claim it because it's a, definitely a team effort with a great leader, right? Um, but I think the direction that we've moved in in terms of economic development and housing have been great. These are two goals that we had as council, and they've been executed. I would say as a District Three person, um, the historic district is a gem. And my primary goal is protecting the historic district. Um, I'm the liaison to the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, but also I get that little sliver of downtown, like just um, east of seventy-five up into the courthouse. So Virginia and Louisiana, that's kinda all the way to the courthouse is still. So I get some of the residents in, in, on that side of town. Um, when I was running, uh, they are a very strong group. They know.
Vocal.
They know what they want. They have a very clear vision about what they want. Um, and one of the concerns that was brought to me as I was campaigning was we have a historic district that really is on the cusp. If we don't protect it, it is going to go away. There are people moving in, designing homes that do not look like they fit here. And if you guys don't start putting some protections in, then we're gonna have some problems. And then we had a whole thing called the Ice House situation, which was, I don't know if you guys know about that.
It was a mess.
It was a disaster. The Ice House was a disaster.
By the, um.
But the new municipal complex, um, which was more than anything, poor communication on the side of the city, right? But shortly after that, there was a house across the street from the yard that was demolished. That was a beautiful home. And the decision really came down to one staff person, right? And that initiated a cascade of events that really pushed me to push staff to put better measures in place. So that we do not have homes that are just demolished. I mean, hundred thirty, forty-year-old homes, right? Um.
That's a travesty.
It is heartbreaking. That one kept me up. I was like, you know, how.
Cause you literally can't rebuild it.
You can't rebuild it.
It's gone forever.
Yes.
They don't make them like that anymore. Literally, don't make them like that anymore.
Not, absolutely not. So if we don't put measures into place so that we don't continue to have to fight the same issues decade after decade, then we're gonna keep.
For those not familiar, how does that happen? Cause obviously it's city code, a building ordinance, and there's Uniform Development Code and whatnot. There's a whole bunch of stuff that comes in from a regulatory perspective. What can council do to help combat that, for those that may not be familiar?
First of all, it really came down to, of course, the engineering department is, is, is a player, or code department's a player. But um, it came down to the Historic Preservation Officer making the, the decision whether or not that got a C O for demolition.
Hmm.
And so what we basically did was say that that is not sufficient. And now it has to come through the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. That means another seven people have to weigh in on whether or not that, that building can get demolished.
People that are.
There has to be a full presentation as to why.
And those people are appointed by council and volunteer to serve on that board.
Absolutely.
So any citizen who cares about that particular thing can raise their hand and say, hey, I wanna serve on that advisory board.
And it gives an opportunity for the public, because it is a public meeting.
Yeah.
So anyone who lives in the historic district or just has a passion for historic preservation can come to the meeting and voice their concern as well, right? So we have a whole lot more input.
Yeah.
As to what happens to a home once it gets to a certain state. Now, there are some things that we cannot and should not preserve. Cause it's just not a high-quality product, doesn't add anything to our district. Um, but there, there are a number of project, projects that honestly, you have developers coming in because, I mean, let's be honest. If you can knock something down and build something up, you can sell it for a whole lot of money, right? And so we've gotta protect that area because it is a um, highly sought-after area to be in.
Yeah. And if we don't, if we're not careful, gentrification comes in hard and fast.
It already is there.
People are gonna be displaced.
Already there.
Multi-generational families are gonna be displaced.
Yes.[1681.44]
Outside of their own control, and that would be a disaster.
Right, right.
And it just, the, the justice warrior in me is like, that's wrong.
So gentrification is happening.
Yeah.
No question, especially east of five.
Highway five corridor is, is, it's full of it.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of rejuvenation and new business and everything else going in there.
That word rejuvenation means different things to different people.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
And that's, this is a very charged conversation.
It is.
Uh, we never got into this with Justin Beller when he was here. I intentionally did not get into it because we were running short that day.
Yeah.
And it was like, this is a twenty or thirty-minute conversation and we just don't have time for it.
So complex, and he's, he is absolutely one of the best people to speak to it, I would, I would say, but.
I, I want to get him back specifically to talk just on that one issue.
Yeah.
How in the world do we protect our history while making room for development and innovation? Cause I mean, we had Michael Quinn on and, you know, Director of Development, and I'm a development guy. I, I, I love that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, but at the same time, I'm a history buff and I appreciate where we came from.
Absolutely.
So you gotta have balance between the two.
You do.
I mean, most of the charm about our downtown is the fact that those are all historical buildings that have been there, most of them for more than a hundred years.
Yeah. We've got a lot of great architecture downtown.
Yeah.
And it's, it, when I go across the state and talk to other people who know about McKinney, they all say, man, I want a downtown like y'all have.
Yeah.
That is primarily what I hear.
Suck it Frisco.
Well, they've got their own bragging rights.
They do. They have, I, I love that here in, in Collin County, we have like, you know, Allen, McKinney, Plano, Frisco, are their own distinct cities within this, this county, and they, we all have our own little thing, you know?
Allen, Frisco, Plano, McKinney.
In my opinion, of course, right?
Objectively.
But what, what attracts a lot of people to McKinney is our downtown. And there's, there's been a lot of efforts to make sure it stays vibrant.
Yeah.
Right? And some of that means redeveloping, like we're doing the downtown redevelopment right now.
Yeah.
With MTG as, um, our partner on that.
Can't wait to see what happens there.
I, I, listen, I'm really excited about the possibilities there. Really excited about the possibilities.
We think about a boutique hotel, even if it ends up not being six stories, let's say it's four or five stories.
Yeah.
But I mean, taking something that is being vacated.
Right.
Like the city's not there anymore.
Right.
Slab that whole thing, build something new that's consistent architecturally, give the good people of McKinney some more cool stuff.
Right, right. And they've done cool projects, so you know, I'm just, I'm excited to see.
They were in Carrollton, right?
They did the Mule Project out in Fort Worth. That was probably their, their.
The Crown Jewel, okay.
So they, they are, they are really a great group to, to work with. Um, and, you know, we're not very far off from seeing what they are gonna bring for us, so, you know?
So you were elected in twenty-one. You've got six months left on this term. You haven't announced reelection yet. I'm not gonna ask you to come out. If, if you want to say now that you're.
Do not, I do not want to say now.
You do not want to say now?
No, I do not, yeah.
I figured I'd give you the opportunity, but I'm not gonna put you on the spot like that. I, I know you have people chirping in your ear. I'm not gonna be one of them.
You know the key words.
Bet you won't.
Oh.
Bet you won't.
Maybe you've peaked.
What, is, was it all you could handle was one term? You can't handle two terms, can you?
No, 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 listen, you know, we'll, we'll see.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to rename this the Peer Pressure Podcast.
Well, I, I can't speak for anybody else, but I can say that you're guaranteed at least two votes.
Well, thank you.
From my wife and myself.
That would be fantastic.
Because.
Um, I would be honored to have those two votes.
The number of times that she has not put effort in to becoming fully educated for the ballot box, and she goes, I haven't researched this one. Who do I vote for? And why do I vote for them? She lets me be the Cliff Notes, cause she knows I'm all in on this stuff.
Just listen to your podcast and probably catch all of the things she needs to know about the ballot.
Most of them, yeah.
Yeah.
I try, we try really hard to not like politic here and just give people an opportunity to say what they think. And Fred and I will share our opinions from time to time, but I don't want anybody tuning into this podcast to hear what we think, like.
Yeah, but you know, but, but we exist to celebrate what makes McKinney unique by nature.
People like Dre Feltes.
That's right.
Oh, y'all are very sweet.
Hey, I promised you one to two o'clock. We're about at that point. Is there anything that we haven't talked about that you wanted to? Any question we didn't ask you that you wanted us to?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Or should we just throw an up or down vote in there, you know?
If, Dre, were to run again, would you vote for her? That seems a little bit like, you know, cart in front of the horse.
You're, you're gonna have a group that are gonna be a, a little.
The chronically offended, the chronically angry.
But I think, I think for the, the majority of what I've heard has been overwhelmingly positive, positive. So I want to say thank you to the citizens of McKinney. We really do have, in my opinion, the absolute most awesome people in this city.
We really do.
The most awesome, and it has been such a blessing and honor to be able to not only meet, but get to know people on a really personal level and see their hearts for also giving back. It's just, it's a great place to be.
It really is. At the end of the day, the people make the city.
They really do.
So.
Yep.
That's right. Okay, so we have a lightning round we always wrap up with, all right? So no wrong answers, just, just two choices. So first off, okay, so first off, pumpkin pie or apple pie?
Apple.
Apple pie.
No question. I'm not a big pumpkin pie, you know, I'm a sweet potato pie.
Getting shafted on these, these, these votes here.
Nobody wants pumpkin pie.
Sweet potato pie overall.
Yam pie.
Okay, all right, so.
Yam pie.
So with Cool Whip or without Cool Whip on your pie?
Without.
Without.
Yeah.
Who puts Cool Whip on apple pie, man?
It's, it's, I like ice cream on it.
Oh, see.
Vanilla bean from Blue Bell?
You know it. How did you know?
Are we in Texas?
Is there?
It's that leadership McKinney vibe.
I know, that's what it is. It has to be it, yeah.
So that would be the.
Extra brain cells.
That's right. Okay, so now here, here's the, here's the really tough one.
Okay.
Licorice jelly beans or fruitcake?
They're both disgusting.
Gross. Uh, I would say fruitcake. I can't do the licorice, especially the black licorice.
Okay, um, here, here you go McKinney lady. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna put you on the hot seat here.
Let's go, let's go.
Ricks or local yokel?
Uh, yai, yai, uh-uh. I plead the fifth on that one.
I told you.
No way. There's no way. How do you pick between those two?
Flip a coin, you gotta pick.
Aye. Oh, no, I, I, no. I mean, there's two different types of food.
I know. I said it wasn't gonna be easy. I personally love, you're lucky I didn't say the yard or local yokel, cause they're kind of similar foods.
Man.
But different vibes.
We've got great food in McKinney.
Strong food scene.
Great food, and great food on this, oh, I've gotta plead the fifth. Oh, my God, I can't. There's a lot of decision here.
Let's skinny it down to just Rick Wells options.
Okay, okay.
Harvest or Ricks?
That's right. Harvest or Ricks.
Newly Michelin-starred harvest.
I know, and.
Heck, yeah.
That food is fantastic, but I'm kind of old-school Ricks.
Yeah.
I, it's, I've been eating there since I moved to McKinney.
Yep.
And it's.
That's my favorite place to have a business lunch.
And I love harvest. I love them both, but I'm still, I'm, I'm partial. Have you ever had the brunch at Ricks on Sundays?
No, I haven't. I, I've, I've gotta call.
The best.
Do we have him on the list? I have, Rick Wells has been on my list. I haven't called him yet.
Yeah.
Cause I, I wanted to get through a lot of people and then kind of pivot to the business side of things.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, Rick, Rick is absolutely.
Have him go, you, you need to call now if you want to go next Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay, but it is a full brunch, prime rib, like the whole, all of the things. It's fantastic.
Okay.
Fantastic food, yeah.
Okay, so she chose it.
Wells and Hamilton will both have their son.
They're, they're great guys.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, Matt and Rick are phenomenal.
Phenomenal, yeah.
Uh, okay, so Adriatica or Hub One Twenty-One? I told you these are gonna be hard questions.
You are really trying to get me.
But it's lightning round, so you know, no wrong, no wrong answer.
There's no wrong answer.
No wrong answer.
Adriatica. There's a, there's a new restaurant over there. It's an Indian restaurant that is just.
Yeah.
Die for.
We had.
Oh, it's right there by the Bella Donna.
Yes.
We had a, a sneak peek dinner. I somehow got an invite from George and Al Perry.
Yes.
And I, I was like, really? Did you invite me?
That is top-notch.
It was amazing.
Food there, yeah.
Yeah.
But also, the scenery there is, is, it's a remarkable development. It's so pretty, yeah.
The George and Al and everybody over there on that development, just.
Yeah.
Absolutely top-notch.
Absolutely.
I don't have any more gotchas, like really gotchas. So Fred, you got any more gotchas for, for Dre?
I, I think we've, okay, all right, so let's, 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 let's really take it up a notch here.
Beyond choosing between Rick and local yokel? Oh, man.
Pumpkin spice latte or tacos?
What?
Tacos, this is Texas. Tacos.
You know, there's some people, there's some people who are, you know, I, I asked, I asked that question randomly out on the street and someone was like, pumpkin spice latte.
There's no way.
And I said, but you can't get that year round. And someone said, you can, it's a lifestyle.
No, the only thing I have to say is Cary Grant, get out. Like, you know that meme when Cary Grant's like, get out?
Yeah, that's not it. Yeah. No, tacos all day.
Okay, all righty. Okay, James, ask her the really hard one.
Okay. Who would win in a fight between a giant polar bear and a great white shark?
Oh, God.
That happens in a pool of infinite size. There are no edges to this pool and the pool is only six feet deep. Who wins? Giant polar bear or great white shark?
This is an interesting question.
Yeah.
Giant polar bear.
Because whatever you say, I'm gonna ask you why.
Well, but how big are great white sharks though? They're pretty big.
They're big, but they always attack from below. They don't attack straight on.
I, I think you don't have enough room for a great white shark. I'm gonna go with polar bear.
I also am team polar bear.
Ah.
Because, great, yeah, best class ever. Best bear ever.
Uh-huh.
No, because the shark attacks from underneath typically. If, if you give a shark a choice of attacking head-on and attacking underneath, it's going to attack from underneath. Nobody wants to vote against the, uh, the great white shark, because I mean, they're one of nature's most terrifying predators.
This is a really interesting question.
Yeah, because there's no wrong answer. You could choose shark, you could choose bear. We're just gonna ask you why when you choose, so.
Awesome, that's awesome.
Any, any final thoughts before we go?
This has been great. I love your podcast. It's awesome. Please don't stop. We need you here. Because I think the public enjoys hearing from different people.
Yeah.
In the city, so.
They're gonna enjoy hearing from you, I know that much.
I hope so. I hope so, but I appreciate the invitation.
You dang well better run for reelection. I'm gonna be very disappointed if you don't.
Well, thank you, James.
That's right, and we've, we've already requested response from the audience, so.
Okay, so I'll look at the poll.
And I will just, I will just say right now, if someone's dumb enough to run against you, they are welcome to come sit in that chair.
Okay.
And I will grill them and say, who do you think you are?
Be nice.
I'll be nice.
Play nice with everyone.
They're gonna have to beat you fair and square, which, I mean, good luck.
Well, you know.
Good luck.
You know.
So.
We'll see what happens.
I, I see, I see that little smirk.
That's right.
Okay. So when you come back and you're, you're going for reelection a few months from now, you can come back a second time.
Oh, wow.
We'll have you and your opponent sit right next to each other.
Man, you could have duked out fights in here, huh?
When it comes back around, when it comes back around to having debates and having like public forums and stuff, I submit myself as someone to moderate, uh, these kind of conversations, myself and Fred.
Did a fantastic job with Prop A. That was a fantastic job. You let, you let each person speak, you know, so.
And I may not agree with Paul, but Paul is a very intelligent man. Uh, obviously very principled and passionate in what he believes, and he's very well spoken. He, he spoke charismatically and he made his point. And the, the people of McKinney that voted by a two thousand citizen margin, um.
Yeah, that was a shocker. I honestly, I'm, I'm surprised it was that close, to be honest.[1514.01]